This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
Hello, everyone. All of the board members are currently signed in, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Meta, can you confirm that we're in compliance with open meetings laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you, and please do a roll call to verify our form.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is to adjourn to closed session. I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session under state statute 19.851E to discuss the annual CPI increase.
So move second.
Multiple move and second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, we will adjourn to closed session. We intend to be back shortly before seven o'clock. All right, it's seven to five, and we will now call the open session of our meeting back into order. The board did not take any action during closed session, and we'll schedule an additional closed session to hopefully finish our CPI increase discussion for this week. We'll start as we always do. Those of you that are willing and able, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll next move into our public forum. Public has the opportunity to sign up for up to four minutes to address the board. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We'll ask each of our public commenters to please share their name and address at the start, and I will apologize in advance if I do cut you off at four minutes, but we will keep to that four minutes. We have four members of the public signed up tonight for public comments. Please forgive me if I mispronounce any of your names. Our first one tonight is Ken Sullivan.
Hello? You can hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, my name is Ken Sullivan. The address is 403 Garfield Avenue, Eau Claire, and I'm a retired teacher. I taught in the district for 31 years, and I'm also a member of the Chippewa Valley Area Educators Retired. Last year, we promoted, we love our Public Schools Week with people and signs at the schools during the week of, the third week of February. This year, with the COVID, we decided not to gather. Instead, we are going to place 10 to 12 signs at each of the schools throughout the week. We only have about 50 signs, so we're going to just keep spreading them out at different locations. Our president, Chris Hamburg Boyle, has talked to Superintendent Johnson about this, and I plan to also send him an email with our schedule of where we'll be. Okay, and then we are hoping that the board will support the "I love my Public Schools Week" resolution. I think the superintendent has, is going to, or has shared that with you. So again, the week of February 22nd to the 26th, we're replacing, we love the public school signs at all of the school buildings. Hopefully, we'll place them there so the teachers and staff see them in the morning, parents see them, they see them when they leave at the end of the day, then we move on to another school. Any questions?
So, Mr. Sullivan, the board does not engage with the public during this time, but thank you for presenting, and we do have that resolution on our agenda for consideration later this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pete Kaverher.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pete Kaverher. I live at 6360 Whitetail Drive. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed transition bridge facility for 18 to 20, 21-year-old students in the district. My son Liam is a 20-year-old student in the transition program at Memorial High School, and he would benefit greatly if a facility like this one, this proposed one, at East Ridge Center was built. A place outside of the high school setting that can teach my son and his peers independent living and social skills will allow him to be a fully included member of our Eau Claire community. It will allow him to learn job skills, living skills, and have a facility that focuses on his development as an adult. This facility can also be a hub in the community where young adults with disabilities can learn and congregate socially, where they can have the same social and recreational opportunities as their typical peers. The Eau Claire School District has a unique opportunity to build a program that will have a lasting effect on students with disabilities throughout the Chippewa Valley. We have a staff of educational professionals that are ready and willing to build and develop a top-notch program that will benefit our kids for years to come. Building this program for fall 2021 will allow our kids to catch up on their valuable life skills that have been severely curtailed due to COVID-19 and allow them to reenter our community in a positive and lasting way. As a parent with a child that would greatly benefit from this program, I am, I will do whatever I can to help develop and build this program to make it successful in the community. I'm all in. Thank you for your time and for considering this proposal and for listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak will be Beth Ivankovic.
Hello, good evening. My name is Beth Ivankovic, South 5001 William Court, Eau Claire, and tonight I am speaking as a parent as well as a board member and president of the Special Education PTA, known as SEPTA, in the Eau Claire area. And I'd like to ask you to please vote for this new transitional option that's going to be discussed later tonight. As you know, the end of high school is a daunting time for families and kids. For most of our high school students, they're thinking three different options: university, community college, or going to work. For our families with special needs, we are worried about the cliff or the great abyss, the concern our children will be at home all of the time. We really do not want them on our couches or in front of electronics. We want our children to figure out how to engage with our community and have a fulfilling life. In 2004, a study on post-school outcomes research showed that students who participated in community-based training, which involved instruction in non-school, natural environments, focusing on all sorts of things from domestic skills, the things that Pete just mentioned, were more likely to be engaged in post-school employment. In 2013, DPI published a framework for community-based training options, and communities all over Wisconsin have moved their programs to community settings. Over the past few years, we have seen Project Search and Life Without Limits start in Eau Claire. These wonderful, age-appropriate experiences in the community back up the study I mentioned before. Their graduates are finding work, some even graduating from CVTC. Unfortunately, many of our special needs students just don't meet the qualification for these initiatives. They remain in our high schools. To me, having a community-based option will lead to success based on two big factors: age-appropriateness and flexibility. How many high school students do you know that would want to spend five or six years in a high school building? Our special needs children are no different. The peers they have gone to school with for 12 years have graduated and are now gone. They don't want to take classes with 14 and 15-year-olds or continue taking classes that have already been taken. They want new experiences and learning. Age-appropriate settings, that is, out of the high school, bringing peers from all over the community together to learn and practice. Flexibility is the next key to me for why a transition option housed out of our high school is so important. Teachers are not limited by the rules of the high school building, the bells, the schedules, the lock doors. The location that Mandy Van Vliet and her team has found is absolutely perfect. As a parent with, who always looks for accessibility, this building has wide hallways and is extremely accessible. I'm extremely excited about this opportunity, not just for all the kids, but, but my son especially. So many of our neighboring communities have moved their transitional students to an out-of-high-school building option. I think it's time that Eau Claire does the same. As you discuss this opportunity, please vote yes and know that the special education community will support you. I know that I will definitely. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our final public speaker tonight is Becca Hiers.
Hi, I'm Becca Hiers from 1514 Fairway Street. I'm speaking tonight in regards to making snow days virtual in future school years. I know this is something that's going to be voted on either tonight or in the near future, and I urge you to consider the impact this is going to have on families. I'm lucky that my kids are old enough to complete virtual learning on their own without any adult help. However, many younger kids struggle to do so. Parents have to scramble to find last-minute care for their young children on snow days. Now they'll have to make sure that whoever find, whoever provides this care can also make sure their child is participating in virtual learning. For example, today I had a coworker who had to call in because she has a daughter in second grade who's not accustomed to virtual learning since she's doing school four days a week. My coworker usually has a high school neighbor watch her daughter on snow days, but she had her own virtual learning to complete, leaving my coworker with no choice but to stay home. And I cannot imagine that she's the only one who was in this situation today. Also, what about teachers who have school-aged children at home? How are they able to teach virtually while also needing to help their own children? My daughter said that today one of her teachers got interrupted several times to ask her own children to be quiet and leave her alone to teach. How is this at all efficient or worthwhile? Many families send their kids to the Y or under sports center on snow days. Will you be communicating with these facilities to make sure their staff is prepared to help every child with virtual learning rather than letting them play all day? Before you make a final decision regarding this issue, I would ask that you communicate with teachers to see how today went for them. Did they get participation? Did many students not even log on at all? Was this even worth making it a virtual snow day? Perhaps ask families how they feel about this decision and how it would impact them. What harm would it do to have built-in snow days like we always have? And if we go over that amount, then have those days be virtual learning so we don't have to extend to the school year. And I just want to end this with the quote from my 11-year-old son, who I'm sure is not the only one who felt this way or who feels this way. If we have to do virtual learning at home on a day with a bunch of fresh snow just waiting for me to play in, there's no way I'll be able to concentrate on schoolwork. And I'm pretty sure he's not the only kid who feels this way. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Johnson.
Our students and staff have been very active in the district over the past couple weeks. Some brief athletics and activities news to start with. First, I'd like to congratulate our Eau Claire Alliance Boys Swim Team for qualifying and participating in the state meet this year, taking 13th overall. Our ECA Stars Girls Hockey has advanced to the state tournament, participating Wednesday in the Division One Frozen Four. The North High Dance Team took first place in Poms and Jazz at the Badgerette State Competition. North High, excuse me, North High, pep band and dance teams have been performing at home boys and girls basketball games. The North Show Choir and Orchestras have been practicing in person again after school and are running in-person band and choir practice in class. It's really been enjoyable to watch students interact with the music teachers using safer distancing practices and observe the different levels of students interacting with each other. At Memorial, they've been very busy in the music department as well. There are plenty of opportunities for their choir, Old Adolf Orchestra, and the Memorial Band are all streaming performances in March. We will be sure to publicize those. Thanks so much to the music teachers over the past few weeks with their preparation and opportunities for the students and community. Next, our certified staff retirees submitted their notice of retirement by February 1st. As of tonight, we had 35 staff members who had done so. While I cannot recognize all of them individually this evening, I know it must be an emotional time and a difficult decision for them because of how deeply they care for their students, colleagues, and families. We're losing a wealth of experience with this group and institutional knowledge and commitment. Thank you all for your service and dedication to students. Two weeks ago, I mentioned that it was National School Counselors Week, and this past week, we celebrated National Bus Safety Week. I reached out to Jim Fied and Student Transit on Friday to congratulate them for their commitment and care for our student safety, especially during our winter weather. We appreciate your dedication for our students and families. On a related note, due to winter weather, I thought I would address our first inclement weather day today. There is so much time and effort that goes into these situations, and we take great care to make the best possible decisions for all involved. We consult with Student Transit. I connect with our administrators and directors and area superintendents as well. With situations like cold weather today, I take into account items that can differ greatly from district to district: the timing of when students are picked up, dropped off, when they are driving or walking to school, for example. Then we get to the weather. I don't think I've studied weather patterns as much since Geography 102 at the university with former Eau Claire Area School District Board Member Dr. Richard S. Holmes, yet I certainly do now. I appreciated the time and effort our staff and families have dedicated to our first virtual day today, and as our last speaker mentioned in public comment, we do look forward to getting feedback from staff, school administration, and families. We must do so to improve our process and model in the event of a future closure. Thanks very much for your understanding today.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Move on to the board president's report. I have three items tonight. The first is that the board's proposed equity statement that was read in a first reading at our last meeting is available for the community to read on the district website. The board welcomes feedback prior to our vote for adoption, which will occur at our next meeting on March 1st. The board continues to move ahead with development of our new proposed governing policies. The first draft of operating expectations has been completed. Members are encouraged to read them and leave comments. Governance, culture, and results are both nearly complete in draft form, and Commissioners Lyons, Harder, and I will be working alongside the admin team to develop a draft calendar for policy monitoring. Board members have been invited to receive a copy of The Art of Governing Coherently to continue this work in our development as a board. After reading it this weekend, I highly recommend it and look forward to discussing it with each of you. Finally, the board will meet in its current blended format through the rest of the school year, where members are free to meet in person or virtually. Tonight is being the exception with the inclement weather, where we're all, all board members are virtual. This, of course, is separate from the ongoing work of the district monitoring our COVID data and the work toward offering more face-to-face school for ECAs and P students. Thank you. We'll now move to our student representatives' report. We'll start tonight with our representative from North High School, Zoe Wolf.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're having a great evening. There have been some scheduling issues regarding the AP testing dates. One of my AP teachers informed me that the district had a few options for different dates and chose to stay with the original plan. Due to classes not being able to have the full instruction time, many classes have fallen behind from where they would be during a normal year. The testing dates should be given some flexibility between the three timeframes based on certain classes and/or students. Based on the current decision, cohort C students would be required to enter the building, which is something they may not have done throughout the year and may not be comfortable with. All I ask is that other options are explored while keeping in mind that this year has been very different from every other. It has also come to my attention that plans are being made for the upcoming school year. I believe that we should be in school full-time or as close to full-time as possible. Students miss the simple interactions in the hallways, at football games, basketball games, school dances, and other fun events like that. We miss being allowed to interact with each other without being ridiculed. I understand there are safety precautions that must be taken. However, separating students that come into contact with each other outside of school will do little to stop the spread. Also, evidence points that the virus is not being spread inside the schools. For some students, remote learning has allowed them the freedom to flourish. However, online learning has been a struggle for almost every single one of my peers, including myself. As we look forward to next year, returning to full campus learning is one of the best options. Most students will look forward to returning to the traditional learning environment. However, that is not the case for some students. The online learning model should also be an option for students that prefer this learning model or don't feel comfortable returning to school. Thank you.
Thank you. We now turn to our representative from Memorial High School, Emery Tool.
Hi, I'm going to just raise some additional points and echo some of Zoe's regarding AP exams tonight. In the interest of keeping it relatively brief, most of the information will be pretty surface level, but if any of the board members want more in-depth information or opinions on anything, feel free to reach me at my email. It should pop up in Outlook for you. So first, I'll just give a really brief rundown on what the College Board has offered as far as testing. There will be three administrations. The first will be completely normal insofar as it'll be a pen and paper exam administered in school in the first two weeks of May. So that's what you see, you know, every year except for last year. The second administration will be a mixture of those normal exams for some subjects, and there will be some subjects where a digital exam will be offered, which will be full-length as opposed to what happened last year, and it'll be securely administered in the second two weeks of May. The third administration will be all of, all digital exams in the first two weeks of June, except for music theory and world language exams, which will only be offered in an in-person pen and paper format. I would first urge the district to offer digital exams for their virtual students. As Zoe said, forcing, you know, virtual students who maybe haven't even been in the building yet this year to come and take an exam in a group, a large group of people in one room, isn't fair or equitable. To the best of my knowledge, this decision can be made on a student-to-student basis beginning in early March. So our AP coordinators would be able to assign virtual students to digital exams. So it wouldn't be like an all-or-nothing decision where either all of our district tests are tested virtually or all of us have to test in person. And then secondly, I just want to raise the question of the fee deadline for AP exams, which is currently set at March 5th. It's approaching quite rapidly for students, and I wonder whether this is a district deadline or a national one. I would like to see a decision about how exams will be offered by the district before payments are due, and this could potentially mean pushing back the deadline if that's within our power, if it is a district deadline and not a national one, or working very efficiently to make and communicate this decision to students and families before the current deadline so that they can make the best possible decision regarding which exams they'll take. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our board committee reports. We'll start as always with budget developments and Commissioner Harder.
Thank you. Good evening. Budget Development Committee did meet last week to, our, our primary topic was the, the transition program facilities question, which we'll be hearing a lot more about this evening, and we will meet again on Wednesday of this week to continue our work on salary and benefits.
Thank you. Next is demographic trends and facilities planning. Jim Kohler.
The demographic trends and facilities planning committee will meet on Thursday of this week. We do have a completed study from the Applied Populations Lab, which we anticipate will be reviewed with the committee, and then we will discuss the implications of that study as well.
Thank you. Leap, Jim Schmidt.
There are reports on the Arctic Zone and Documentary Theater Performance Agreement renewals and a new agreement being developed to be brought to the board for Acres for Joy, which the board first heard about in November of 2019 in a committee report. And then the update on the, on the innovation video that is waiting for a few local celebrities that live within our schools to get caught up on before we can wrap that up.
Thank you. Policy and Governance met last Thursday, February 4th at our regular time. We recommended the retirements of the obsolete policy 383, which is on the consent agenda tonight and is actively replaced by updates to policy 343.45 and 343.46. We also began examining all those policies that use the term handicap with a focus on updating to remove this outdated language and replace it with disability and other modernized language where necessary. Mandy Van Vliet will be updating those policies, and we will bring them to you as they come through Policy and Governance. We also continued our review of the governance culture policy drafts and expect to complete our initial review of that section at our meeting this coming Thursday. We'll now move on to the legislative updates. Dr. Johnson.
On February 4th, Assembly, the Assembly approved a mask mandate repeal and amended the COVID bill yet again. On that same day, Governor Tony Evers issued a new executive order to declare a new public health emergency and statewide mask mandate. On the same day, a public hearing was held on Senate Bill 55, a bipartisan bill that would modernize the publication of proceedings, minutes of meetings held by school boards and other governmental bodies. This bill would authorize school boards, as well as city councils and the Board of Villages, Counties, Technical College Districts, to discontinue paying to publish the proceedings of regular and special meetings in a newspaper by instead posting a copy of the proceedings in a public place on their website and transmitting a copy to a newspaper likely to give notice in the school district. The Department of Public Instruction has published the Vaccination Planning for Educators Checklist, designed to assist school district administrators and school nurses on how to prepare for the vaccination of educators. The Department of Public Instruction proposed significant amendments to Chapter PI9 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code, which addresses pupil nondiscrimination. Among other changes, the proposed rules, known officially as Clearinghouse Rules 21-007, would require modifications to school district policies and procedures for receiving and processing pupil discrimination complaints and establish new mandates regarding annual comprehensive internal evaluations and reports on the status of nondiscrimination and equality of educational opportunities in each school district. The Wisconsin Department of Justice has received two reports of RAYUC ransomware impacting the education sector in Wisconsin. RAYUC is typically used to target large enterprise environments and has been one of the most prevalent ransomware variants impacting state, local, tribal, and territory entities. The CDC released new school reopening guidance on February 12th. The new CDC guidance discusses several mitigation strategies for safely returning to in-person schooling, including those already utilized handwashing, cleaning facilities, and improving ventilation and doing contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine, but emphasizes two strategies in particular: wearing masks and physical distance. The Federal Department of Education also released guidance referred to as Volume One, Strategies for Safely Reopening Elementary and Secondary Schools, additionally encouraging families and staff to check your symptoms at home prior to, during a school. Governor Evers unveiled, is set to unveil a state budget proposal. The details of his 2021-2023 state budget proposal will be released shortly before his state budget address, which begins at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 16th. The budget will include an additional $54 million for a school-based mental and behavioral health initiative. The GOP-led Joint Finance Committee voted down along party lines a DPI plan to equitably distribute roughly $65 million in federal coronavirus relief funds to schools and replace it with a plan that directs funding to districts based on the extent to which they are providing in-person instruction. Wisconsin state statutes gives the Joint Finance Committee authority to review and object to the distribution of federal funds by the DPI if they reflect an increase of 5% or more above the federal funds indicated in Chapter 20 Appropriations Schedule. No vote of the full legislature nor approval by the governor is required for this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We now move on to our consent agenda. The board votes on the items on the consent agenda with one vote without discussion. The board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. If any board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's items on the consent agenda are the minutes of February 1st, 2021, financial report, January 2021, 2020-2021 budget adjustments, gifts in the amount of $5,956.57 for the period of January 2020. gifts in the amount of $5,956.57 for the period of January 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2021, payment of all bills in the amounts of $4,015,18 and net payroll in the amount of $3,524,798.66 for the period of January 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2021. Human Resources Employment Report, Orginal Wealth Management, Proposed Changes to Policies 343.45 Technical College Course Program, Start College Now Program, and 343.46 Early College Credit Program, 2021-22 School Year Calendar, Retire Policy 383 Youth Options. I would now hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
May it please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Bika.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
The Consent Agenda is approved. We now move on to our individually considered resolutions. Our first item tonight is the Resolution in Support of We Love Our Schools, our Love Our Public Schools Week. This was spoken about by Mr. Sullivan at the beginning of our meeting. In the interest of efficiency, I will simply read the resolution, and then we can discuss and vote. Resolution in Support of We Love Our Public Schools Week. Whereas the Eau Claire Area School District Board, administrators, educators, staff, parents, and community members of the Eau Claire Area School District are united in our efforts to provide all children with the highest quality educational opportunities. And whereas all public school students in the state of Wisconsin deserve the same exceptional educational opportunities and highly qualified educators, staff, and administrators. And whereas the week of February 22nd to 26th, 2021 has been declared We Love Our Public Schools Week. And whereas the Eau Claire Area School District Board resolves to support public schools in Wisconsin. Therefore, be it resolved that the Eau Claire Area School District Board calls on our legislators across the state and country to support We Love Our Public Schools Week and provide equitable funding and opportunities for all public school students. In witness thereof, the undersigned, being all of the members of the School Board of the Eau Claire Area School District, have executed this resolution on the 15th day of February, 2021. Comments or questions from Board members? And then, of course, we'll need a motion to approve the resolution, adopt the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Hearing no discussion on the motion. Oh, Dr. Bika. You're on mute, however, Dr. Bika.
Thank you. It's not really discussion of the motion. I just wanted to say, grab an opportunity to say thank you to Ken Sullivan and all of his colleagues for their leadership, both last year and this year. It's really awesome, and I'm so delighted to be able to go out and see the signs that you're going to put up. So, thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion? Just because I think we're all excited to support this, let's go ahead and do this as a roll call.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Bika.
Yes.
Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
Commissioner Harder.
Yes.
Then the resolution is adopted. Our next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 Leave Discussion. I believe that Kay will be walking us through this. So I'll turn it over to you, Kay.
Thank you. Okay, so, Marissa, if you could just go on to the next slide. Thank you. So at the last board meeting in December, I presented to the Board an agenda item related to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or FFCRA. At that time, we were aware of the passing of a pending legislation, and to assure that the employees of our district didn't go without benefits for paid leave related to COVID absences, the Board approved the extension of the FFCRA benefits until such a time that the new legislation went into effect. The vote of the Board was the recommendation of administration and was supported by our district's legal counsel. That was all done with anticipation of the new legislation having benefits that applied to public school district employees. Unfortunately, that was not the case, and there was no mandated pieces of the legislation which would have automatically caused the district to adopt and enforce the new legislation. Therefore, the action that the Board took from that December 21st meeting did not guarantee the coverage of our employees, as we had all hoped that it would. Due to the fact that the current legislation does not pertain to public school district employees, the district would need to voluntarily create and adopt their own benefit plan. As a result, I'll be sharing information tonight that should assist the Board with moving forward with the new motion to provide our employees paid leave related to the COVID absences. Before you hear is a summary of our emergency paid sick leave benefits from the FFCRA, which was in effect from April 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2020. You can see that the information is broken down by employee group, and this information indicates the number of active employees, how many of the employees still have the full 10 days that were allocated remaining on December 31st of 2020, how many had either five or nine, or sorry, five to nine or one to four days remaining, and then how many needed to use all of the 10 allotted days that were available to them. Additionally, the same information is broken down into percentages. There you can see that of the 1,455 active employees during that time period, just about 2% used all 10 days. Nearly 9% needed to use some portion of the 10 days. And the 89% of the active employees never had to use any of the 10 days that were allocated. The data shown here is consistent with the expectations and duties of the physicians. You can see that the physicians with less flexibility to accommodate duties virtually have a lower percentage of days remaining, and those with more flexibility have a higher percentage. Overall, I think it's excellent to see that 89% of the employees who didn't need to use any of the benefits. That speaks to the efforts at each of our buildings regarding our mitigation strategies related to COVID. This survey seen before you is related to the Big Rivers Conference Districts, as well as information that we found reviewing publications from state-level organizations. And it provided details regarding what some other districts and school boards are or are not doing in regard to the new legislation that does not account for public school district employees. The actions that districts considered include either granting new emergency paid sick leave, adopting the Extended Family Medical Leave Act, rolling over the remaining emergency paid sick leave balances, rolling over the remaining Extended Family Medical Leave Act balances, or providing no additional COVID leave absences at all. Of the 14 districts listed, you can see on the very top that Amory, which is a small district with approximately 1,500 students and about 220 employees, is providing all the considerations that I just mentioned. And then they actually, in some additional information that I have read regarding what that district is doing, they're actually extending it above and beyond that for anybody who has utilized all of the options that they're providing. So, other than Amory, which is clearly an outlier, you can see that two districts are providing new emergency paid sick leave balances. Eight are rolling over their remaining balances. One rolled over the Extended FMLA balances, and then three decided not to extend any additional benefits at all. The districts that are highlighted in the orangish-tanish color, depending on the look of your screen, those are other districts in our Big Rivers Conference. So, now we're getting into the different options that the Board can consider related to availability for options for our district employees. So, Option A, that you have before you. This option is basically an extension of the FFCRA emergency paid sick leave benefit by rolling forward the balances that employees had as of December 31st, 2020. So thinking back to the information that was just presented, for about 89% of our employees, this would be an excellent option because those employees also have the full 10 days remaining. However, for the remaining 11%, who have the need to utilize either all or a portion of those 10 days, this option might not be as favorable. Because the full onset of this benefit goes back to April 1st of 2020, that is effectively the, that is, yes, that is effectively the effective date of this benefit. However, if the Board elected this option, administration would work with employees who were out on COVID-related absences that would have been eligible for the paid leave benefit from January 1st through today, and we would work to provide the benefit retroactively from their remaining balance, and then deduct that from the days that they had left. If we look at the next slide, this would be Option B. And this option provides all employees with a new 10, with a new 10 days of emergency paid sick leave beginning on January 1st through June 30th. Again, the benefit would be for the absent days, meeting eligibility for COVID absences, and would be retroactive to January 1st. Any days used from that point to today would be deducted from the 10 days provided by the district. Option C, which is Slide 8. This option addresses the employees who may need to be absent due to their child's daycare or school being closed due to COVID. Under the old legislation, this was mandated as the Expanded FMLA, meaning that employees could use their 12 weeks of FMLA for this reason. Obviously, under normal circumstances, employees would not be able to take family medical leave from their place of employment because the child's daycare provider was closed. However, under the provisions that, under the previous legislation, the definition as to what FMLA could be used for was expanded to include this. Additionally, under that legislation, employers were required to tap and save the employee who utilized this benefit 2/3rds of their daily wage. Under the new legislation, the Expanded FMLA is no longer a mandate for any employer, and as you know, it does not pertain to school district employees. Based on a review of other district responses to what benefits they were providing, you can see in the previous slides that this is not one of the benefits that area districts were eager to offer to their employees. Part of that is the expense, part of that is the potential for misuse or abuse of the benefit, and another reason is the overall lack of substitute coverage for all districts in the state. And finally, with the COVID positive case numbers that have been, that have dropped significantly in schools and communities as they have, in addition to the fact that districts have staff who have already received the vaccination and others that are on the cusp of getting it in the future, many of the districts simply didn't see that this was an area of focal point for where to place their resources at this time. However, I think that we do realize that the situation may still be a reality for some staff members, and if they needed, or if, and if needed, we wanted to make sure that we provided an avenue for them to be able to take the time if there really isn't any other option available for them. Therefore, this option, Option C, provides the ability for an employee in this situation to utilize their individual paid balances to assure paid days if needed. These balances consist of sick days, personal days, and vacation days. Personal days and vacation days could be used for this purpose now, without any additional board action. But because employees receive three personal days per year and can accumulate up to five, and not all physicians in the district are eligible for vacation days, we felt that it was important to expand the definition of sick days to allow those days to count toward this purpose, which is not something that they could do currently, under the current provisions. Again, if this option were selected by the Board, administration would work with employees to determine if anyone had been absent from January 1 through today for this purpose, and if the proper eligibility for the COVID absence was met, those days would be modified to accommodate the correct leave balance utilization. The next slide, on Slide 9. This relates to any recommendation that the Board would make tonight. So, the administration would recommend that the School Board adopts either one or a combination of the options that were presented, with the understanding that if the government passes legislation which provides mandated COVID-19 paid leave benefits that would apply to public school district employees, that the Board's adoption of an option would become null and void upon the effective date of the new legislation. The reason for this piece of the recommendation is that once the Board adopts a voluntary benefit for COVID paid leave days, and then new legislation passes that does actually affect our employees, and that legislation is mandated so that the district has no option but to apply and enforce that, we'd have two separate benefit plans going at the same time. That would be something that we'd want to make sure to avoid. And I believe that the language that's in this recommendation accounts for the things that we thought were accounted for in what the Board adopted in December, and it clearly, it clearly didn't, didn't account for what we had thought. So, I believe that the information and the language that is specific in this slide accounts for those things that it didn't previously. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that any Board members would have related to what was presented.
Thank you, Kay, for bringing this back tonight. Thank you for the work that's gone into these particular options. We'll now open it for Board member comments and questions. I'll remind members to please use the handraise function, so it's easier for me to see who is waiting to be recognized.
President Nordine, I can no longer see the handraise option in my screen. I apologize.
I appreciate your letting me know that. That is helpful. We can still, we can also then still, just go ahead and unmute yourself, and we'll try to figure that out for next time. So, our previous practice has been just unmute yourself if you're looking to speak. I see you, Commissioners, are just taking a flip to the other side. So Commissioners, go ahead.
Yeah, you, can you answer in Option C for those individuals who may have, you know, for whatever reason or another, utilized many of their days, and then, oh, they're, you know, we heard that in public comment, and it's been brought up to me a couple of different times, where, you know, people might, certain individuals might not have those banks of days. So you're saying that there's an additional three to five days that they weren't allowed to use, that now with this option, they would have access to, depending on their, how much time they've been with the district? First of all, is that, is my understanding of that correct? And second, can you talk about the, the bank of the sick leave bank that employees can access? And can employees access the, the, the bank for this purpose? If, if for some reason they've utilized their days for, let's just say, caring for, for children whose, you know, daycares in schools have closed?
Sure. So, I think that the first question related to Option C was the days that would now apply to be able to be utilized to care for your children if the daycare or school were closed. So, the difference in what we're proposing here is that we're opening up the definition of sick leave. Currently, sick leave balances are, the only thing you can use those for are if you, as the employee, or your children, or an immediate family member within your household are ill, or have a doctor's appointment. So, the definition of sick leave and how you can utilize that is, is pretty centered around sick leave or medical appointments. And so we're expanding that. We're saying that for the remainder of this time, from January 1 to June 30th, we will allow employees to utilize their sick leave bank to receive paid time if they needed to stay home because their child's daycare or school were closed. In essence, that's what Option C is opening up. They would have always been able to use vacation time because vacations, you're on vacation. They would have always been able to use vacation time because vacations, you're on vacation, and personal days because that's your personal, you can use that for whatever you choose to use it for. The reason that we're extending it to sick leave days is because employees receive three personal days a year, so that wouldn't cover the amount of time that they would need if their child, school, or daycare was closed. Even if they had saved those three days up to five, which is the max of what you can save, in most cases, that still wouldn't get the full time that they would need. And so that's why we're opening up sick leave definition to expand that so that they could use their sick leave balances for that purpose, which again, isn't something that they would otherwise be able to use. So that's that piece. And then your second piece about the district-wide sick leave bank, I think that was what you're referring to, correct? Yeah. So district-wide sick leave bank is not something that could be utilized for this. Kind of in a 30-foot view definition, the district-wide sick leave bank is reserved for catastrophic illness and injuries of employees or their immediate family members, and so this, this, for this purpose, that wouldn't, that wouldn't account for that, for that rationale. Can I answer your questions?
Very well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. So for, for points of clarification, previously that what was included in the, in the legislation was actually options B and C, correct?
Option B was, so in the first legislation, option B, yes, and option C, no. The piece of option C, the expanded FMLA, that piece in the old legislation, there's a piece in the old legislation that allowed for employees, well, didn't allow for employees. In the old legislation, employers were required to allow employees to take off for the care of their child if their daycare or school were closed due to COVID, and then employers needed to pay them 2/3 of their wages. And so that was the mandated piece of the expanded FMLA. Employees could utilize that option if they still had any time left in their 12 weeks of FMLA leave that they had. And so FMLA is an unpaid, that's an unpaid benefit unless the employer allows employees to substitute paid leave, which of course we do. So even if an employee has paid leave that they could substitute in for that time, which we allow people to do, and the majority of time employees choose to do, based on that mandated legislation, employees wouldn't be using their paid leave for that time. The district would pay 2/3 of their wages for that. The employee could then choose to take 1/3 of a sick day to make it a full day during that time, but the district, it's one of those unfunded mandates, you know, the district paid 2/3 of, of the wages for those days that the people were utilizing under that leave provision. So option C is providing an avenue for people who still need to have that happen, but not the 2/3 pay piece, and providing a different opportunity for them to still receive pay if they have to have that time off.
All right. And then just a follow-up question. Could you just, just estimate, if you will, what would, what would the table that you provided, so it, I had slide four for me, for, excuse me, not, not slide, not slide four, but what would the table look like in slide three, the FFCRA summary of Eau Claire Scottish Employee Data? What would that table, what would the percentages look like? If you could estimate, what would the percentages look like if we were to go with option B? If you had to, if you, if you ended up redoing those tables? So would, would I be assuming correctly then that pretty much majority of individuals, including our building and grounds, would be back to, at minimum, five to nine days?
If we went with option B?
Correct.
If we went with option B, everybody would get 10, 10 new days. So everybody would be at 100%.
All right, thanks.
Kay, with the caveat that people that had used, say, personal or sick days in January and the first part of February would, would have fewer than 10 days, but they would get the days that they had taken, you know, kind of reimbursed or made up, right? But I mean, everybody kind of starts with a clean slate and as though we had done this on January 1st.
Exactly. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. I'm not currently seeing any additional, oh, Commissioners, did you have an additional comment?
I just have an additional, I just have a question. So, Kay, with the, the, with the FMLA extension piece of it, what, can you give me a, a summary or rationale as to why we would not allow those 10 days to be used for that? You know, or like, or, or, you know, like, either or, like, you could use 10 days, you know, at 100%. So like, let's say you have to take three days off because you, you're awaiting test results or whatever the case may be. And then, you know, next week your child's school's closed and you take five days at, at 0.8, so now you've used eight days total. I mean, at 80% or whatever, 2/3 funding, that's what it was. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand why, if, if we had the combine, if we had it count against those 10 days, would that somehow mitigate? Do you feel like that would mitigate the, the, the chance that it could be abused? Rather than having it be an additional benefit that could just be tapped into at any time if it was just part, if it was like one of the bullet points that staff could use those 10 days for? Can you discuss that a little bit?
You're saying if part of the availability of the 10 days was to be used for a daycare or school to be closed due to COVID, they could use those 10 days?
Correct, but maybe at a lower, you know, maybe, maybe at that original FMLA funding I guess, to that point, how many, how many, do you have data on how many staff actually used expanded FMLA days? You know, just so we can get a sense of what that number even looked like? Because I just want to make sure that we're not missing anybody who might get in a, in a sticky spot with, you know, variants and all the stuff that's coming our way with that. I just, I just want to make sure that we're setting our staff up to be able to take the leave that they need and have it be as flexible as possible to be used in, you know, to whatever gap they might have personally.
I don't have those numbers handy, and I think the other piece of that is, you know, why we wouldn't do that? I think it goes back to the qualifications for the leave, where the emergency paid sick leave, if we go back to the original legislation, the emergency paid sick leave was very cut and dry in terms of, like, there's medical documentation you had to have. So when you talk about, you know, misuse of the benefits, there really couldn't be with that. You were quarantined or you, you actually had a diagnosis of COVID, and there was medical documentation that accompanied that. So the days that were, that were utilized for that, there, there was no question regarding that. The expanded FMLA was, there was a lot more gray area in that because there was no official documentation. It was simply, you know, I can't, I can't find childcare. And so there is, there is a lot more wiggle room with that, and with the lack of substitutes available to find coverage, and the unfunded mandate for the 2/3s, and it wasn't something that was related to a medical condition for the employee or the employee's family member. It just wasn't something that, you know, we felt that we could support in terms of additional compensation for, for our employees. That's not to say that we didn't feel that if that was a situation for somebody that there shouldn't be an avenue for them to be able to take that time and to be able to have an opportunity to be compensated, but that, that compensation should then come from their already established bank. So that's, that really does hone in on the people who truly needed that time and makes it a lot cleaner, like the original language from the first legislation, and takes away that, more so the questionability of the expanded FMLA that I think all the districts were struggling with, which is why you don't see that in, you know, what other districts are recommending as they move forward. Did that help at all?
Yeah, I just, I guess what I was, what I was kind of thinking about is like, if, if everyone gets 10 days and somebody takes all 10 of them fully paid by the district for one of those medical reasons listed in option B, what would, what could potentially would be the harm in allowing those 10 days to also be used at 2/3 funding to take care of a, you know, someone who is, you know, stuck at home for whatever reason or another due to the pandemic? You know, or, I guess a child, you know, because it's like, we're already saying that we would fund it fully. Why wouldn't, why, you know, what would be the harm in saying we'd also funded it at 2/3s? But I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I understand the cut and dried nature of it and the easy, you know, easy documentation with all of it, so let me think about.
So of course, it would be, we, we need to act on this sooner rather than later so that we can put into place some sort of benefit. So I, I would like to hear a motion this evening to adopt one or multiple of the options presented to us. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I move, I move to adopt a option C.
Second?
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I, I have a question about C. So the difference between B and C is the inclusion of the closure of school or daycare,
It's that, and in option B, the district is granting, the district is, is paying for 10 additional days for medical purposes.
Okay.
And option C, the employee is using their own leave balances that they've already accrued over time.
So cobbling B and C together, I'm trying to picture that, and I'm trying to get my arms around what a school closure now looks like because of COVID, because we have virtual.
This is a daycare or, or another school in the district where, you know, like if I'm teaching at South and Roosevelt had to close down, for example, and then that would be, my understanding would be that it would be, you know, that employee's choice to take sick leave. It's not really a cobbling together, they're two separate items that are providing different benefits. I mean, it's a cobble together in that we're giving, we would, if this were to pass, we would give both benefits, but they're separate from one another.
Okay.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I, I guess feel to, to some of your concerns, I guess for me, my, my, my reasoning for options, options B or C, it, it, it gets an individual as close as possible to, for whatever situation, if you, you had to quarantine for 14 days, you're allowed the 10, plus hopefully you have accumulated four, that you would be able to be compensated for some kind of way and/or the situation where, as I think many of us as school board members have heard some of the concerns from, from some of our certified staff that teach in our particular district, but have children attending other, other districts and schools, and therefore, including both, would help accommodate to a certain degree, alleviate some of those concerns of running into COVID and quarantining. So that was my, my thought processes of going, going with both. It's really, especially though, for our, for our certified staff or, you know, any, any of our staff who work in our particular district but have, have children or, and our loved ones impacted by other districts. Thank you.
Seeing no additional comments, we'll go ahead and call the question. This is a financial item, so it will require a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Motion passes. We will now adjourn to committee. We have three committee reports tonight for our discussion. The first is our regular budget updates from Abby Johnson.
Thanks, Commissioner Nordin. I am getting ready to share my screen right now. Okay, so I always like to start off our budget update with a review of what it looks like for the operating fund balance. This centers around a lot of conversations related to the district because we watched it go down for the past several years. What you remember is last year, due to COVID and due to the early school closure, that we added 7.7 million to our fund balance. So you can see that previous to that year, we were dropping down, and at the beginning of 18, at the end of 1818, we had a 21.2% fund balance. With that increase of 7.7 million, that brought us to 26.9, and with this year's adopted budget of a $1.7 million deficit, we predict that our fund balance will be at 23.2% if the actual ends up just like we planned, and we know that's not how it works, but our budget is our goal. When we talk about revenue for '21, '22, some of the things are a little bit unknown at this point. If everything was the same as 2021 and the current law remains as it is, the three-year membership average for our students that goes into our revenue limit formula would be a projected decrease of 97 students. Our per pupil categorical aid would be flat at $742, and with the reduction of 97 students, that would reduce our revenue by $71,974. Some other things that we need to consider and wonder about is the declining enrollment and the whole harmless piece that is related to the revenue limit formula. So at the current time, where we're looking at budget projections, in 2021, we received a whole harmless allowance in our revenue limit due to the fact that our student enrollment and our three-year average for students was down. We're unsure of if that's going to stay with the legislature. There's been some discussion about whole harmless because there were so many things that were related to different things for the upcoming year, and so really trying to figure that out and how does that impact our revenue over the course of the next year. Decisions to be made and things to consider, really, that are coming up in the next few few weeks. Obviously the CPI base wage increase in '21, '22, um, what is that going to look like? How does that impact our '21, '22 budget, um, projections? Our estimated health and dental insurance rates, what does that look like and where is that going to be? We are expecting some preliminary information at the end of this week, but right now it's too early to tell where that's going to be at and to provide that update to the board at this time. What is the, um, board's decision related to salary level changes for '21, '22? If the board approves them and grants them, just the cost of the additional salary is 1.6 million. That is before any, um, percentage benefits are included with that. So my point in our presentation tonight was just really to let you know that there's a lot of unknowns and things that we are concerned about as we're starting to build and project the budget for '21, '22. And so there's a, the other unknown is that the fact we're in year one of the biennial budget for '21, '22, and we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. In our projections that we're working on, we're looking at some different options and considering additional amounts in the revenue limit. At this point, to be conservative, we're using zero because we don't know what the legislature is going to see. And so that will also impact our revenue projections. So, um, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Abby, thank you for bringing us these, these updates. We appreciate all the work that you do in building our budget and keeping track of it throughout the year. Comments or questions for Abby? I have a feeling it will get more exciting as we get more numbers in and we can see, hopefully what great shape we're in, but oftentimes it starts from a very conservative alarm and moves to the good as we get more numbers in. So thank you, Abby. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item in our agenda, which is the Eau Claire Virtual School Expansion Proposal. This is from Jim Schmidt, but I believe presenting tonight are Ben Dahlman and Shannon Pinkert.
Thank you. Yes, President Nardine, you're correct. So I am just going to be the one driving the computer while we hear from our Principal of the Eau Claire Virtual School, Ben Dahlman, and the President of the Eau Claire Virtual School Governance Board, Shannon Pinkert. So, um, I am just going to start it and then I'll let them begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Shannon Pinkert. I'm the President of the Eau Claire Virtual School Governance Board. When we started thinking about expanding our school, our first and foremost concern was to make sure it would align with our current strategic plan. Our goal, oh, sorry, Jim, you can go one more.
Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome. Our goal from the foundation of this school was to reach new students in non-traditional ways to meet academic outcomes, create a safe environment for some, for our students to succeed, continue collaborating between district departments and our, and other schools as we continue to develop our school, involve further learning for our staff, provide high quality virtual programming, and make sure that we continue to build relationships with our families and other community agencies. Next slide, Jim. I, I will tell you, as a governance board, we do an amazing job keeping our mission statement at the forefront whenever we have discussions concerning the future of our school. I'm not going to read the mission statement to you, but it, um, as we created a plan to grow our school, our mission statement weighed very heavily on our decision. We aim to be intentful, thoughtful, and purpose driven as we laid out our long range plan. As you can see, the plan we put forward to you in 2019 and 2020 was created for the best possible outcome for our school at the time it was developed. The 2019 and the 2020 numbers were approved in the spring of 2019. The yellow is what was approved in March 2nd, 2020. And then italicized, um, the '21, '22 and the '22, '23 numbers were part of our initial plan, however, they were not approved by the school board yet. Also to note, our initial plan was designed prior to the pandemic without realizing the need for online learning would increase so dramatically.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your, uh, your time, your questions, your thoughtfulness with this. As North High School Student Rep Zoe Wolf mentioned, our students need options and the big reason behind this proposal is to expand options for our students, where virtual learning has been a good fit for them. And so this next slide here just shares with you what our capacity had been this past, this current school year and also our enrollment, where we started at about 78% capacity. We're at about 70% capacity right now. We are using Eau Claire School District curriculum with our fourth and fifth grade, and then we have Pearson curriculum, Pearson teachers for our sixth through 12th grades. As far as the, the reason why or the why behind why families enroll, uh, there's a lot of, there's a wide variety of reasons why families find that the Eau Claire Virtual School is the right fit for their kid. Sometimes it's for medical reasons or mental health reasons, or they're looking for a self pace because they're high achieving, um, or just a more independent format, too. So thank you, Jim. Next slide. And so survey went out to, um, all 2,000 cohort C families. We received about 500 responses back again, and about 30% of those responses, uh, came back where they, where they're interested in learning more about virtual schooling for next year. And so beyond COVID, looking at this as an option. Increase in the capacity of the Eau Claire Virtual School has been approved by the school board in the past. And looking at, uh, some different, uh, logistics behind having a cap or not having a cap, we find, uh, the, the Eau Claire Virtual School Board, uh, has found a proposal where, uh, there are some benefits to not having a cap, uh, for our, our, our grades and also in expanding our grades that we have, uh, given the timing of things. The actual class sizes would be based off of staffing discussions. And like other schools, um, the amount of enrollment that we have would be related to, it would directly impact our staffing. And so that has to do with more than just a regular classroom teacher, uh, but there's many other people involved within the building that help support kids. And so, um, this, uh, this next slide here just shows you a cost breakdown. And so, um, the revenue per new student, uh, we've got, if they're enrolled, if they're open enrolling with us, it's $8,125, but if it's a resident student, it's just over $10,000. The contract for going through Pearson this year for our sixth through 12th grade students, uh, this includes the platform, the curriculum, and the teacher. It's $4,349 per student regardless of how many classes they do sign up for. Uh, our proposal that you'll see in just a moment also shows a proposal of using, uh, Pearson curriculum for fourth and fifth grade, but still having Eau Claire teachers leading that curriculum. Uh, the cost of that would be $525 per student and then $350 per, per teacher, uh, just to use the, the platform, uh, in addition to what their salary would be. Then the other part then, and this is really where, uh, the enrollment does drive staffing, uh, the part to be determined then is our student services, so our school counselor, um, our principal, our, our registrar, our office staff, our school social worker, school psych, music, art, fayad, all the other people involved, uh, that would be driven by the staffing numbers that we end up with. On this next slide, it just kind of shows the, the timing of some different things. Some of the parts of the timing, uh, for instance, once we get into open enrollment piece, uh, those are state statute type pieces, so out of our control. Uh, but the timing, like with any, any good decision making, the timing can make a, a difference between a good decision and a bad decision. And timing is very important that we're, we're able to stick with this as it comes down to staffing and enrollment and that type of thing as well, too. And so, um, the overall plan of timing is driven by the open enrollment dates that we have in June. Like our brick and mortar schools, uh, we are already in the staffing season or approaching it quite soon. And staffing is super important. March and April are really important months for staffing for the following school year. Not knowing what the enrollment would be, and this is what was a bit complicated this last year, uh, not having enrollment finalized till August was, uh, knowing, uh, what we need, who we have, and who's going to be with us. By having, uh, our different timelines, we normally have our lottery done in February. We had to temporarily suspend that just because we need better direction or more direction, uh, as far as what we want this to look like as a school district this next year. And having a plan for this, that staffing then, the dollars follow the kids. And so the final, the staffing decisions would then need to be made by enrollment. And so we'd open up enrollment and we want to make sure we, we hire some initial teachers to make sure we're at least ahead of the curve a little bit with staffing in that regard. With the July 1st deadline, uh, that's a really important piece. The July 1st is a commitment deadline for Eau Claire Virtual School, um, students. And that then helps drive our staffing as far as knowing how many music, art, fayad staffing allotments do we need and what do we need for counseling, uh, or all the other related services, uh, because it takes a village. There's a lot of people that are involved that are playing an important role with this. And so the final, the staff, staffing decision, we, uh, determined by student enrollment. And then that enrollment then would be defined by enrollment numbers, uh, and that's, and it's really important then for us to have that stability and the continuity and sustainability, uh, with this being an actual successful school.
So the Eau Claire Virtual School recommendation would include the school board approving no cap on March 1st. Staffing, like Ben had mentioned, will be based on enrollment in the school on July 1st, with enrollment process including a survey of families for the virtual school readiness. Enrolling before July 1st will guarantee a spot in the school and enrollment on or after July 1st would be dependent upon the space that we would have left in the school. So thank you for listening. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation tonight. Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I, I guess I, it wasn't clear to me, but could you, uh, speak to what's, what's the likelihood of the expectations of dual appointments for Eau Claire area school district staff? I guess I, I, I did not catch that because I think in, in one of the slides, it was saying that you would be using Eau Claire area school districts, but then you said then you would be using Pearson, but then you talked about, you know, it's the uncertainty of like this additional staff. Let me try to find the, uh, find, find the slide here, but if you could just...
And I could explain that, too. Thank you for asking. So, um, currently we have an Eau Claire school district teacher teaching grades four and five, and then our sixth through 12th grade is taught through Pearson with Pearson teachers. Uh, what we're recommending is having Eau Claire school district teachers kindergarten through fifth grade, and then eventually looking at six through 12, also including Eau Claire school district teachers, uh, but just making sure we're, we're intentional and it's one step at a time as we build this. Uh, we have teachers in the Eau Claire district that are interested or have expressed interest in teaching virtually, and we have families that are interested in having their child attend virtually as well. What we're, we're looking at is using similar to what fourth and fifth grade is doing this year, we're using Eau Claire school district curriculum. Uh, we'd want to have Eau Claire school district teachers and Eau Claire curriculum for grades kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And then our fourth and fifth grade, we also want to have Eau Claire school district teachers, but the curriculum, we would rely on Pearson. Uh, we have a phenomenal teacher right now teaching fourth grade and fifth grade right now. Uh, what's tricky is, uh, she has to develop her own curriculum while she's teaching at the same time, uh, which those are two big jobs simultaneously happening. And, and so the, the, the huge advantage and a lot of feedback we receive from families is they really like the connectedness, the community touch of having an Eau Claire teacher. And there are a lot of different activities that we can do right here in Eau Claire. Uh, we, we just had a kindness card activity that we had students, uh, drop off cards for Dove Healthcare West, uh, which is a really nice community sense thing. And that's one thing that's, I would say, being a principal in a brick and mortar school and the Eau Claire Virtual School, um, it's an important challenge, but, but building that sense of community with the Eau Claire Virtual School, uh, because that's the one thing that I think is missing that sets us apart from some other virtual programs that are out there. And we try to plan monthly outings and once COVID restrictions are gone, we want to do some more as well. So we want to keep building on that, but, but yeah, so short story long, um, we are looking at Eau Claire teachers kindergarten through fifth grade, um, and now we are relying on Pearson for teaching sixth through 12th grade for now. As this grows, um, would we have more teachers available that are interested, um, in, in teaching sixth through 12th grade? Yes. Uh, but just right now, it's just making sure that we're not getting ahead of ourselves either with them.
So, so, so the, so the primary role, though, that they would not, so the, the person that you currently have doing the fourth and fifth, that's all they're doing? I, so I'm just, so they're not doing, there, there's no, uh, other expectations in the school just as it relates to face-to-face obligations, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I think along with teaching, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies, um, also filling that void of be able to teach music, art, fayad, and all those other things that, that we have specialists within our brick and mortar schools to do. Uh, when we have schools, for instance, at Roosevelt with a .7 staff member, there are many pockets of .3s in our district, uh, that there are people that would welcome to have the opportunity to add on another .3 to complete their, their, uh, their position, but also to meet a need that is, is a current need within a school such as this.
All right, and then I just had a, just a, a follow-up question. I, I, I find it, uh, it, I just think it's ironic that, you know, as the numbers, the class sizes, there's some, there's some specificity there, but then in the last one, as it relates to, uh, six through cell, well, it's determined by Pearson, but then it says that, you know, could add Eau Claire school district curriculum if enough. I, assuming that, that there's a, there's a, there's a finite number for enough. I, and is, is it just not shared, uh, by Pearson? But I, so I'm just curious as to what's the, uh, uh, why there's no, why, why there's no finite number, or is that, is that the school district wanting to, uh, hold out? But you have to, so I'm, I'm just really curious because it also says that you could add curriculum of Eau Claire if enough students enroll. So obviously there has to be somewhat of a finite number. Is that finite number, and that finite number obviously is probably determined by financial standpoint? So could you speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah, that's a great question. So currently, for instance, at elementary, our teachers need to be trained to teach math, reading, writing, science, social studies. And then we have specialists teaching music, art, fayad, and then also library and media. So that's, that's about nine different content areas. If you look at the offerings that Pearson have for sixth through 12th grade, they have one, over 100 different offerings. And so to, to find someone that feels not only certified, but competent to teach chemistry and biology and all the difference, there's such a wide variety. And that's one of the parts of the mission statement for the Eau Claire Virtual School is provide that variety, um, to mul, to give multiple options. Uh, and so I think to get that off the ground, we would need to make sure we have a solid plan of, we have the staff that will be able to, to provide all those different options that are already offered at North Memorial, uh, High School.
Okay, yeah, and just one final statement. I, I, you know, I think what, what's, what's interesting about that, I, I, I'm, I'm not foreseeing a difficulty given the, uh, uh, changes that EPI has actually made to, uh, licensure areas, especially, uh, as it relates to being able to cover multiple, uh, multiple content areas. So it's, it's, it's just pretty curious to see kind of, uh, how this shapes up. Thank you for, uh, the responses to my question.
Thank you for questions.
Fisher Lyons.
Yeah, I, I was looking at some of the, the, the financial numbers and Pearson is going to, uh, charge us about $4,300 per student. The revenue that we're brought, that, that we're given is anywhere from eight to 10,000. So there's a pretty good delta between what Pearson is, um, charging us and, and, and the difference. Has, has Abby and the, the finance staff been brought into this, uh, kind of looking at it from, from, from that vantage point? And, and one of the things I was kind of interested in thinking about was when we had a cap on this, and essentially you're asking for us to take the cap off, one of the reasons the cap was put on was because of capacity. And so I don't know where, um, capacity now, um, meanders, but on the opposite side, I mean, we could, we, we could get into a situation where the, the head count act actually within the school district, um, it kind of diminishes a, a bit. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question, too. I think that there are some parts to that. And so along with the, the $4,300, there are the costs of, of supporting that. So having a, a school counselor, um, you know, for, for 60 students versus 600 kids, that is something would have to change. And so all of the other behind the scenes pieces, that would add something to it. Uh, but I think you're exactly right, though, as far as how that could offset it. The other thing that wasn't evident to me initially was, uh, by having a cap on, it really slows down the lottery process, uh, because if we have a cap on it and we can only call the first 42 out of 100 people signed up. Because if we have a cap on it and we can only call the first 42 out of 100 people signed up, and we need to wait a week for them to respond to say yes or no for sure, and if they say no, then we call the next one. It's just a very slow moving chain reaction. I think that's what pushed our final enrollment. Like, we weren't able to to finish up enrollment till mid-August because that is such a long chain reaction. We have to be so careful with that cap. So especially but by having that cutoff date of July 1st, that allows us to finalize staffing for the part that we have to fill in-house. And then for the sixth through 12th grades, that's where Pearson does have the capacity to take on many students all at once. So yeah, so as far as Abby being part of the conversation, I know this was talked about during the executive committee. I was not at that conversation, but I know Jim Schmidt was part of that conversation and I also assume Abby was part of the conversation as well.
Yeah, I'll jump in that, yes, we did talk about it and I was part of the conversation. This is one that I would be supportive of. I mean, obviously, the cost for cost versus revenue. And so you can see based upon, you know, just if you look at using the Pearson model and the open enrollment amount easily covers what the Pearson model is. And then, of course, if there are resident students as well, that covers the cost. It's important as we go forward and wonder, you know, what are we had so many students that went elsewhere this year. Some went virtual schools, some went to different schools because of, you know, four or five days of instructions for all students. It had a different model than what we had. And so I would be supportive from the business side of removing that cap because I think it provides some opportunities for us to regain some of those students. Maybe that went elsewhere and really appreciate the virtual option. One of the things that we also talked about is that in order to have virtual be a virtual school, you have to have a virtual school. We can't offer a virtual program like we have with Core C right now. And so the fact that we already have the virtual school in place and up and running also serves as a benefit to us because that also might make us a little bit more attractive to students, you know, that want to attend virtually. Jim, did I miss anything?
You're spot on. So we're one of the things we're going to work on is actually communicating that, especially to nearby communities. Because like Abby said, Core C is not an option anywhere in the state next year. And there's not a lot of virtual charter schools in our region. So we really do, we are positioned well. And then as and Shannon has done a great job of getting us to this spot to be able to potentially expand to not just the need of trying to capture the students that we may have lost or that are considering going through a virtual option because we do have nearly 2,000 students in that right now, but also from outside of our district possibly coming in. One other thing I'd like to say, too, just to follow up on something Ben said about which he accurately explained that, you know, that point seven and point three scenario. And and when Commissioner Johnson was asking about like what that number was, typically, we've seen at the secondary level to meet what Ben talked about, to be trained and certified. You know, the difference between being certified in Spanish and German and French, you know, that requires such fine granular certifications and licensures. Typically, you need that secondary to be about 250 students roughly before you really have enough students to be able to offer that. And then if we do have enough to be able to do that, then really this is where K's world could be looking at like a chemistry teacher who is point eight in brick and mortar could be offering that last point two in the virtual if if we get enough students in the virtual school.
Sorry, I was on mute. We'll go to Commissioner Zer and then to Commissioner Harder.
So anyone who knows me and my history with this district knows that I am all I have been in front of the board making these arguments myself a time or two. And the the thing that I wonder about with increasing alternative options for kids is we're we're right now, we're conflating it with the pandemic, right? And we're we're looking at the virtual school as being a necessity of the time that we live in. And I wonder what our plan is going to be going because I'm not 100% convinced that this is the the alternative option I would want to lean into as a board member. The so I'm wondering what our plan is going forward to monitor the data and the success of these students, not just not just to not just to not just for the financial gain, not just for the potential, you know. I'm I'm looking more long term. Are we will we revisit the cap next year? Will we have a report on on virtual learning and the success of it prior to being asked to again? I I guess I would like to know what our our long term plan would be going forward with monitoring the school and its success and and its its enrollment.
And that's a great question. I know coming from from 28 kids enrolled, 50 kids. One thing that's kind of tricky, like to compare like ACT scores or other state testing is when we have such small pockets, we have less than 10. Like, we can't we can't share that out publicly just because it's such a small number and it would really it would. I don't know, there's just some some confidentiality reasons why we can't do that. But I I think as the enrollment gets bigger, if we have a pocket of more than 10 students, at least that way, we we could share data that we do have. I think the other piece thing is that's interesting is I think and I don't think it's exclusive just to Oakley Virtual School, but I think just virtual schools in general have a much more transient population. So that's the other part that makes it a bit more difficult to to have long term data until we have students in our program for multiple years. But to me, I think you're exactly right. I think it makes sense to look at the data just to see is it meeting the kids' needs? And not just looking at achievement, but also growth, like what what is the long term growth looking at? Like, if students are in this program for two years, three years, four years?
So would we then as just as a follow up, and maybe this is a question that goes to Jim, I'm not sure. But would we be would we be then asking the same question every year? Would we be asked then next year to again, would it be part of the the cap discussion when we have open enrollment discussions? Or how would we go forward with monitoring and approving? Because because what what I'm interested in is is once it is safe for us to be in person together again. Is this is the is the virtual? What is the virtual program's role in our district going to be? How are we going to monitor it? How are we going to ascertain whether we want to grow it, whether we should grow, whether we should have it at all? So I I'm just kind of wondering what the long term plan is. Because if we if we open up the floodgates, how do we get the water back in if we need to is where I'm at.
So this reminds me of a saying where I heard, "My crystal ball is shattered." You know, really, the ability to predict what it'll look like. We've done the same sort of question to our colleagues over in Appleton. They've run a virtual school that is 95% of their students and their enrollment is around 550 kids. 95% of their students are open enrollment. They have no idea what next year is going to look like, just like a lot of us don't. You know, to to predict, we really until people actually vote with their feet, so to speak, we really won't know how many will actually take advantage of this. And we really don't know what quote unquote normal will look like going forward. That being said, this is one of our 21 schools. And the only reason to ever have a cap in the first place was still allow for small methodical growth. But the virtual board and the executive team through several different conversations realized at some point that the the growth trajectory they we originally intended and the situation that we're in right now really does force us to consider that if we either have to provide an opportunity for students looking for a virtual option next year because they've become accustomed to that this year, just like some of our teachers have, some of our students have as well. And so we just have to make a determination whether or not we will accommodate that potential need that that exists. And after that, I would not see us coming back for a cap discussion, just like we wouldn't do that in any other of our of our other 20 schools. The only time I would foresee this sort of discussion would be when Kim does her open enrollment conversation in January, where whether or not a school is open or closed. And we should state also in, you know, when when Ben and Chin talked about, you know, if there's if there's availability, really talking about if we have enough staff to support it, right, to be in a virtual world. But I don't really see this being an annual discussion. It's certainly it's it's really a decision whether or not the board wants to change the growth trajectory originally planned just because of the circumstances we're in that no one could have predicted. And we do know the students are going to go somewhere. We have 2,000 students in the in the Core C. And of those who responded to the survey, nearly 30% are interested in this model. Now, as Ben said, it's not a guarantee that they'll show up. It's a very it tends to be a very fluid population that goes into virtual school, virtual programming. But but there are some patterns that eventually settle down and exist. But no one really knows what those patterns are going to look like right now, even those that have been in the game for a long time.
Hi, I will add some notes, too, that I think as a board, what we're looking forward to now for future long term plan is looking at, we now have the opportunity to look at curriculum. We'll have the time to take a look if Pearson is the right platform that we want to stay with or if we want to switch platforms. We can look at staffing, we can look at class sizes, we can start doing stuff like, you know, like Ben was talking about adding adding different classes for the sixth through 12 programs. And we can work on a lot of time and a lot of it, too, is working on that. I mentioned that piece with connecting families with community agencies. A lot of that stuff over the past year has been kind of put on the back burner a little bit just because we've been so focused on how we can meet the needs of these families that are desiring virtual learning. So I'm actually pretty excited if the cap does get lifted and we can move forward, we can start planning and and looking at some of these programs, so.
Commissioner Harder?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, I want to thank Principal Dolman and Shannon and the Governance Board and Jim and Teaching and Learning for for making this this project work. I remember when it was an idea. And it's it's amazing to see it succeed and 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 with the the concept of it potentially growing here is actually very exciting to me. I think when we talk about achievement and you look at the numbers that we see around the state with these virtual schools, the numbers are are pretty low. It's a low bar. And what we're trying to do is bring students out of those situations and into a situation that that's where the district has some more control over over the the future of these students, whether and that, first of all, providing an environment where we can see and and help improve the the achievement capability, but also opportunities to bring students into the district and connect with district resources in a way that they just wouldn't have otherwise. So I'm very excited about it for that reason. I I don't see this as an alternative to other types of of alternative schooling and programming that we could think of in the district. I see this as specifically as a way to to address a population that we wouldn't have access to otherwise because they they would just be elsewhere. So this I'm reminded, though, this came out of part of this discussion of a virtual school at all came out of some revenue committee discussions. And we realized quickly that there, as I just mentioned, there are more reasons than revenue that this is a good idea. But just on the on the cash flow question, we saw some we saw some of the numbers what we and we saw Pearson versus the local students versus coming from an open enrollment, and those those are helpful to see. What wasn't clarified was the the question about staffing that was a blank. But is it fair to say that we can assume there would be that we're talking about? Is it a terrible challenge or is it fairly easy to keep this as a as cash flow positive proposition as we run this program and look at expanding it?
I'm not sure, Abby. I'm not quite sure how that Abby runs the numbers, I'm not quite sure how that.
Right, I think that, you know, it seems like it should be. I think the the challenge and we don't really know and the answer to that question is until we know how many students enroll and what does that staffing model look like. And so, you know, I think you need to have the kids first and see how they shape out as far as the number, you know, the number per grade, the number of requests. And then you have to look at, because, you know, the proposal with this was, you know, one model for K6 and a different model for K5, sorry, and then a different model for 612. And so I think at this point, it's a little premature for us to know if it's going to totally cash flow because I think that you're absolutely right here in that staffing piece is kind of the big question when you're looking at K3 and, you know, maybe K5. So that's something that we also talked about as part of our discussion as an administrative team of what does that look like? And what does the timing look like because we're going into staffing season? And that's kind of where the recommendations on the timeline and the July dates came from was to assist us and still give us enough time to staff appropriately at that point for the students that want to attend.
I just wanted to add, I was extremely impressed by the work that's gone into this. I really appreciated Shannon's comments, both at the meeting last week as well as tonight and Ben's leadership as well and Jim and Teaching and Learning, the Technology Department, you name it. I think, Oakley, what we've learned this year with delivering virtual to 100, I mean, I'm sorry, to 2,000 students and then to survey those students and get that type of response back. And as Jim alluded to, they're going to find that somewhere. And I want that to be here. I want that to be our district where we take care of our students and lead them. And with a real strong mission like Shannon had alluded to before, as did Ben. I I think that's that's a commitment that this school has. And I'm also so impressed by our staff that, you know, it was a it was a heavy lift for many folks this fall, as we all know. But there are some staff that that are sharing with me, that are sharing with others around our executive team table. This is for me, like this is this has inspired me, this has emboldened me, this is this is what I want to do and they want more, they want to be part of this. And I think it's pretty special for families in our district to feel like that. And I know there will be families from other regions and areas that would be interested as well just because I think they know the reputation of some of our teachers in this school.
So seeing no further comments or questions, the my question to my colleagues on the board is whether we want this item on the next agenda as an individually considered item or as a consent item? Commissioner Lyons?
I would go consent item. I think it looks great.
Are there objections to having it on the consent agenda? Hearing none, then we'll place it on the consent agenda for March 1st. Thank you, Ben, thank you, Shannon, thank you, Jim, for the presentation tonight. We hope for great things as the program grows. Our final item tonight on the agenda is the transition program. We heard about this again in public comments. And Mandy and Abby are going to tell us more about the option in front of us.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Mandy Van Bleet, Director of Special Education. I'm going to start us off here and I'm really looking forward to sharing some information regarding an offsite, community-based transition option for our district. So I thought it would be helpful to first start with really what are transition services and why is it important? As part of the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDA, transition services are a required service for all of our students ages 14 to 21 that have qualified for special education. Transition services are defined as educational activities and supports designed to assist students with disabilities to reach measurable post-secondary goals. Transition services are discussed at every annual IEP and a post-secondary transition plan is developed for students that are 16 years of age and older. This transition plan outlines the This transition plan outlines the student's goals, supports, and services that will be provided to that student. Many of our students are able to meet the goals of their IEP and transition plan at the same time as when they are graduating, while some other students, many other students also continue to need, have the need for receiving special education services after reaching the requirements for graduation and being the age of 18, and some all the way to the age of 21. Bringing your attention to the bottom of the slide, 18 to 21 transition services take on a little bit different feel than what they do for students that are ages 14 to 18 years of age. Districts look to provide community-based transition options for students in order to meet the varying needs of students that continue to receive services. The state refers to these as community-based transition options, or CBTOs. Districts provide options in order to meet the varying needs of their students. These options provide opportunities for students to gain independent living skills, social skills, employment, and self-advocacy in real-life settings. Gives up students opportunities to participate in age-appropriate settings, as these students we were talking about are young adults and ideally located outside the school setting. So why does Eau Claire need an off-site, community-based transition option? In 2018, the Special Education Department, along with school staff, began reviewing how we provide and implement transition services in the Eau Claire School District. Currently, Eau Claire School District has two off-site, community-based options, Life Without Limits and Project Search. These two options do provide opportunities for students to gain work skills resulting in employment, increase independence, and overall, both options result in positive outcomes for our students. However, these two options do not meet the needs of all of our students that continue to receive services. Some of our students may have more significant disabilities and require more support and services for them to be successful. We currently do not have an off-site, community-based option that meets the needs of these students. A district our size does serve a large population of service of students that have these needs. This is where we have a gap in our programming. Currently, these students continue to attend their high school until they reach the age of 21. This means they are spending six to seven years at high school, and which you can imagine is not desirable of our students, for our students. Because of this, they are mixed in with our students at high school and then have similar needs, but are the ages of 14 to 18. Our special education departments have done a fantastic job trying to deliver services within the high school setting, but authentic transition programming for students that are 18 to 21 is just not possible in a high school setting. So with this, we began exploring community-based transition options and learning from other districts and how they have developed off-site, community-based transition options for students. We visited transition programs around the state and in Minnesota. And through this process, we established goals for an off-site, community-based transition option. By providing an off-site location for these students, we would be able to improve their post-secondary outcomes by providing authentic transition programming. We would be able to provide opportunities for these young adults to gain independent living skills, social skills, employment, and self-advocacy in real-life settings, and to create an opportunity for students to participate in age-appropriate activities within the community. This would also provide an opportunity for our school district to further strengthen community partnerships with the resources that may be a continued need for students to be successful and as they transition from schools' community-based services. This would also create a smoother transition for our students and families as they transition from a school district to community and community supports and services. So one of the things we started doing through this process is we had, as we looked at, would this be a possibility for Eau Claire? Is what would be the requirements of a space if we were to have an off-site, community-based option for our students? Fully supporting this idea, we developed the criteria that you can see on the screen. We wanted to find a space that would allow us to create a non-conditional school setting for these young adults. The space would need to be large enough to allow for a kitchen, teaching spaces, or classroom space, ADA compliance bathroom and shower area, areas to provide one-to-one therapy or meeting space, large area for recreational and leisure activities, sensory and storage. The team established it was very important to be centrally located between North and Memorial, as this site would serve both North and Memorial students. We of course wanted a safe and secure entry and location for the, for the site. Many of our students would be working on independent skills and it was important that students would be able to practice coming in and out of a safe and secure location. We wanted to ensure that there would be access for the city bus transit routes, so that students could learn how to be independent to and from. We also needed a location that would allow for student transit, school buses, to be able to enter the facility at ease and drop students off. We wanted a location that would be accessible to community resources and businesses, so it would be just maybe a walk down the sidewalk or outside for students to practice some of these skills at other area businesses. Of course, the, the budget is really important. We needed a space that we could lease or rent that would be affordable on an annual basis. And of course, if we are able to expand, if our program is able to expand and we're, we're able to open this option up to other districts, we wanted to have space to expand in the future. What we learned from some districts is that they may start with an off-site location and a temporary location until they have the funds to renovate or work in the district budget to create an off-site location that meets the needs of these young adults. COVID did set us back last spring in our plans for looking for space in Eau Claire, but once the school year got started in about October, we were able to focus our time and attention on this project once again. We began searching for space in Eau Claire and honestly, we did, we went into this thinking we would likely not find a permanent location for this off-site transition option. We assumed we'd find a temporary location and then make plans for moving into a temporary, for a permanent location. Fortunately, we found a perfect location for what we believe will be, would be a permanent location for this option. On the screen, you will see East Ridge Center office space. We are looking at leasing an office space in the East Ridge Center. Most of you are likely familiar with the location of this building. This location hits all of our requirements for a permanent location, so we knew we wanted to move forward with exploring this a little more. The space we are looking at leasing is on the end of the building near the Saving Grace Lutheran Church. The picture on the right is the hallway once you enter the East Ridge Center and the space is the first door on the left. The space is large enough to renovate, the space to meet the varying needs of the students that would require transition services. Because this space will meet the needs, what we are looking for, we wanted to move forward with this project. COVID also created a unique situation where, within the special education budget, because of COVID restrictions, we have not been able to do all the things that we do in a typical year, and there is room in our budget to allow for the renovation of this building. I'm going to pass on the next two slides to Abby Johnson. She is going to share more information on the budget and the cost of the lease and renovation.
Thanks, Mandy. So we have a couple of slides related to the budget that we wanted to share with the full board. We did talk about this a little bit in budget development, so this should be familiar to those of you that sit on this committee. So we've really been exploring two options for this space, and so that's why there is multiple columns on your screen. So one of the things that remains the same in the initial lease for the five-year or the 10-year is the monthly, annual lease, the monthly lease cost. And so the space in all of year one would cost $3,750 per month. Line two really relates to the construction amortization. And so in the five-year and the 10-year plan, that's because we would propose that we pay for those construction costs using some of the excess funds related to COVID, that is part of the flow-through grant. And so Mandy alluded to that and shared a little bit about that before. In the five-year, five-year renovations and 10-year renovations, that's the additional cost on top of the monthly rent, if we were to put those construction costs into the lease payment. And so you can see in the five-year construction amortization, the additional monthly cost is $3,963. And for the 10-year, it's $1,943. And clearly, the difference is related to the amount of time that you're paying for those construction costs. So that leaves us with an annual cost for year one in the five-year and the 10-year of $45,000. And then the five-year with the renovations brings that annual cost in year one to $92,556. And for 10-year, it would be $68,316. In the five-year and 10-year, there is a construction cost if it's paid upfront. That cost in the five-year plan is estimated to be $205,000 and in the 10-year, $175,000. And the difference between those two is that if we were to finance a construction cost upfront and have the landlord of the facility complete the construction, there was a construction incentive that was provided to the district. And so that amount of that construction incentive in the five-year plan was $20,000. And in the 10-year plan, it's $50,000, and that's why there's a difference between those two numbers. And then the other thing that we wanted to articulate is that if we finance the construction cost into the lease, there's additional interest cost in the five-year plan of $32,793. And in the 10-year, it's $58,143. And just to be very clear that in the annual lease payment, there's a 2% increase per year. And so that's why we really focused on the cost of year one to kind of help you understand what would that look like and how would that impact the special education piece. Then we looked at the total cost of the five versus the 10-year lease, and we thought it was important to break it down monthly and also annually, so that way then the board kind of understood how that impacts the budget and the overall piece of the, of the special ed part. So if we do the five-year option, you can see just the cost of the lease is $234,000. And then the $225 for construction less the $20,000 incentive that I just referred to brings that total cost for the five-year plan for $439,000. If we look at the five-year plan and renovations, again, that lease cost is going to be the same, because that doesn't change related to the five-year plan. But what does change is the construction costs. And so the construction cost plus interest is $237,793. And so that brings the total to the $471,793. If we look at the 10-year lease cost, now we're looking at $490,500. And then that construction cost is $175,000 for a total of $665,500. If we're going to amortize and, you know, put that over the life of the lease, then that brings that total cost up to $723,643. And so you can see how the different options impact the annual cost. And actually, this flag really specifically shows over the, the length of the lease and which direction the board would consider going. One thing that I want to stress and remind you is that this is outside of the regular district budget. And so the proposal would be to pay for the cost of the renovations through grants, through fundraising and donations. And these initial projected construction costs would be covered by the non-taxpayer dollars. And as Mandy shared earlier, that would be using excess funds that are available in the flow-through grant that is kind of a one-time opportunity related to COVID costs that we are, know that we're going to underspend in this year's grant. The other thing that it was important to remind the board is that currently, the Life Without Limits program is leasing space over at CBTC. And so by moving to this space, Life Without Limits would also move to this space. And so that would eliminate that lease cost for CBTC. And so in this, the proposal here tonight, that Life Without Limits cost would really be replaced with this lease cost. So I wanted to share with the board that the Budget Development Committee talked about this and reviewed this last week. And the Budget Development Committee and the administration's recommendation is to support the 10-year lease option, because that way we would look at this as being a permanent home for the plan. And there are some additional, you know, financial incentives as well related to the construction cost if we're, if we decide to go that direction. So with that, what questions do you have that we can answer for you?
Thank you, Mandy, thank you Abby for bringing this forward. It seems very exciting to me, but I will open it up to my colleagues for questions and comments. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I, I have a lot of questions, you know, I, I think I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited for this. I guess, I guess one of my, one of my concerns though about this project is we already know, I think from a, from a state level, just like other states, but especially in funding for special education is a subpart. And I guess for me, I think it's on page, page four, and you also included in your table, that program continuation says it's dependent on external grant funding. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, the concern for me is that unless we have unbelievable grant writers and are that's not really a, a, a certain strategy to protect, especially if you're wanting something long-lasting to serve as the potential for that. So, you know, that's one of my questions as it relates to the, you know, are there, you know, look, look, looking ahead, are there ways to embed the, the importance of this program in a more firm financial, financial setting? But then I guess for me, it's talking about the program in between, in the proposal, you guys included that, you know, what is it, the other two programs have different criteria that did not include a lot of, of our students with disabilities. So I, I'm curious, one is what would be this criteria for participation? And especially, how does that criteria differ from the other two programs that our students have participated in earlier? And, and, and I'm hoping that somewhere in the response that we, we, we ensure that the program, it's expansive in who potentially could participate that in determining whether, you know, that's based on intensity of supports that students need and all the types of behaviors that the curriculum will promote. And then that, that question about potentially the program serving 20 to 25 participants, can you speak to, are we talking about a, a rotation of individuals participating in the program? And are individuals finishing up that timeframe of 18 to 21? And are, when these individuals and their families seem fit that they've benefited enough to potentially be successful as it relates to independent living? Those are, those are three questions, I'll stop there, but if you could, you know, I, I think, answer all of those or any of those, so the, the predicate that this program is heavily dependent on external grant funding, the piece about criteria, especially how that criteria differs from the other two programs that you spoke of, hopefully that it's more expansive and people potentially participate. And then address actually that, the idea of the 2025 participants during the academic year. Thank you.
Sure, I can start off with some of those questions. I think it would be helpful, so the, the number 20 to 25, that number comes from us looking at trends from the last few years and looking at what is coming up for next year. That is the number that, of potential students that, whose needs would be met in a program that we're making the proposal for tonight. So that, that number will look different depending on how many students every year are going to stay with us to continue to receive services past the age of 18 to 21. So that there will be some movement in that number, just depending on how many students we have in our district. The other two programs that we do have, Life Without Limits does meet a different, a different group of students that will stay past the age of 18 to receive services. That program is a community-based program and it strives for helping students become independent and be able to navigate the community and the, the employment, depending on what their goals are, independently. So they have the ability to be independent, they just need support and additional services to help them be independent. Project Search is also has a level of independence that is required for those students in order to participate in that program. So our location for that is at the Mayo Health System Clinic, a hospital, and there is a level of independence that is needed for that program. The program that we're really looking for is creating an off-site, community-based option for our students with more significant disabilities. And likely, they don't always have the ability to be independent in the community. And not all, but some students will always require to have some type of long-term care supports to help them, whether it's employment, live in, live possibly in a group home or some other, you know, living situation, have some sort of support and employment. But they are students that have more supports and require more supports and services to reach their goals on their, on their IEPs and their transition plans. I think another question that you had in there was how or when, who determines when they've met their goals? That's part of the IEP team and looking at that. That's part of the IEP team, and looking at that transition plan to determine if they've met their goals and if they're ready to, if there's still the requirement to need those services. And if there is, they continue to receive those services until the age of 21. And some of those students, then it's a handoff to long-term care supports from the school district out to the community-based resources to help them be independent in their life, or, you know, depending on what their goals are. Did I, did I catch all of those besides the budget questions that you had?
Yeah, 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 you know, for, for the most part, it's really that, you know, I think that that criteria piece is really, I think, important because that will follow up on some other questions, but for right now, that that was, and then if we can just talk about the budget, please, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to add before Abby gets into that is, one of the things that we would like to make part of this program is some of our students may not have the independent skills to access Life Without Limits or Project Search, but if we were to have them in an off-based or off-site community-based transition program like this, we could really build on those independent skills so that Life Without Limits could be an option for them or Project Search. So that's another important piece of the team working together to support our students and create paths for them, and some of the paths may be a path to, to Life Without Limits or a pathway to Project Search.
Go ahead, Abby. Okay, thanks, Mandy. So the, the budget question is a good one, and so I think that maybe we didn't do a real good job explaining the grant funding. And so we receive grant funding under the flow-through grant every single year, and so that's just due to federal funding, it's kind of like Title I, it's a program that services in our specific special education population. And so typically, we're using those funds to pay for transportation, pay for alternate placements, any types of services that are related to special ed that are kind of above and beyond, that would not be considered an aidable expenses. Aidable expenses, we try to keep in the regular special education fund because there's categorical aid that comes back to that. And I think that we may have talked about that earlier, you know, the budgeted percent that we are expecting to receive is about 28%, and going forward, they are trying to increase that categorical aid percent to 30%. And so, again, that's not on all special education expenses, it's only on aidable ones, which is typically your salary in fringe are the most common. So we use these grant dollars to pay for other things related to, you know, special ed services that we're required to provide anyway. So the annual lease cost, we are very comfortable that we have enough funds each year within the IDA flow-through grant to pay for that annual lease cost. In 2021, we're in a unique situation because our transportation costs are down and also our alternate placement costs are down, and so that would provide additional dollars that we could use to complete those construction costs. And so when we're talking about grant funding, we're talking specifically about that idea of flow-through grants that we get year after year. Now, there is some opportunity to apply for some other grants, and of course, we would do that to support the program, there's just no guarantees, Dr. Johnson, like you talked about, and so those would be, you know, in addition to the commitment we're comfortable making out of the IDA flow-through grants.
Well, seeing no additional comments, I think it's, I've said, okay, then obviously an additional comment. Dr. Johnson, the floor is yours again.
Yeah, my, my, my apologies to my colleagues, you know, this is actually, you know, an area that I, I'm very, very passionate about as I, I do a lot of programming here. I, I guess for me, given that one program that you potentially said that this program potentially springboard, I guess for me is, when we're talking about springboarding into what, what is it called, the Life Without Limits program, you know, I, I think, given the limited opportunities that students and families with disabilities have, I'm, I'm hoping as, you know, as we move in this direction with this particular area, that it's always in addition to, and we're not taking away from, and you know, especially given the limited opportunities that individuals with disabilities, because I, I see all three programs existing and potentially feeding off one another, but I would not want potentially the springboarding of this particular proposed program potentially taking away from and or limiting the opportunities for students who are already being serviced by those other two. And so as, you know, as this, as this potentially moves forward, I think it's always the hopes that it's always in addition to, then potentially taking from, so thank you.
Yeah, I would like to just add in response to that, that you, that's a great point, Commissioner Johnson. A really important key word that I've used multiple times tonight is the word option. As a district, we need multiple options in order to, in order to meet the varying needs of our students. So we would never want to take away the option like Life Without Limits because that does meet a set of students and, and we have great outcomes from that program. So that is not the intention at all, it's to create more options so that we meet the needs of more of our students.
When Abby came to me to ask for this to be on the agenda for tonight, I said, Abby, a chance to help students where the budget is not noticeably impacted is probably the easiest thing in the world for every board member to do. We're all here because we want to impact our students and especially some of our marginalized students, like our special education population. So without any objection, I'm just going to go ahead and suggest that we place this on the consent agenda for next time. I know there's a little bit of a time limit, the landlord over there wants to make sure that they have an understanding by March 1st, but certainly putting it on the consent agenda tonight indicates that it will pass through anyway, so it almost gives a bit of certainty ahead of time. Unless there's an objection, we'll just go ahead and do that. Hearing none, I'll once again thank you, Mandy, thank you Abby for the work here. It's exciting to see this additional option. My wife works with Project Search students over at Mayo and has nothing but, but praise and excitement for that program. I'm looking forward to the impact of this one as well. I'm sure we all are. At this time, I'll ask if there are any requests for agenda items for March 1st from board members. Hearing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Agenda setting is 8:00 AM tomorrow.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.